Hello, everybody. In accordance with Section 29-1 of the Code, of the Borough of Raritan, there shall be a five-minute time limit per speaker. Please direct all questions or comments to the mayor. Impertinent, specious, or personal remarks are inappropriate, and anyone who cannot follow the common rules of courtesy or who becomes boisterous may be asked to leave the meeting room. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a written copy and an email, a copy to the Borough Clerk's office after making your comment. Anybody like to make a comment during open comments? Seeing no one, we will move along. Item number one, sewage authority representatives are here for the interceptor project. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
I'm Ronald Anastasio. I'm the Executive Director of the Somerset, Raritan Sewage Authority. And we're here tonight to give you a short presentation, which is an update about a project that we've been working on for a couple of years now. About two years ago, I met with the Borough Administrator and Engineer to discuss with them an issue that we were having regarding the conveyance of sewage in the interceptor and how it's tied to the different towns. What we're here tonight to talk to you about is that problem and our solution for the problem. We have a short presentation. We're going to distribute some handouts, and our engineer, James Todd, is going to take you through that. I have a series of reports that will be referenced in the presentation. This is a letter addressed to the mayor, but I'm going to leave it with you, Dan.
Thank you, Ronald.
Can you pass that along? I'm sure Stan will get that at some point. And I'm going to hand this over to Jim.
Good evening. I should be able to get this done in about three hours. Fifteen minutes is what I'm going to shoot for. I'm going to go through some of the slides quickly, but there were a few slides I thought about deleting out altogether, but I thought you may want them for reference for the future, so I just left them there. I don't want to spend a lot of time on them. So what I want to talk to you about today is, very quickly, the problem that we faced, that Ron just alluded to, a sanitary sewer overflow that's occurring in Somerville Borough because of their location within SRVSA's interceptor system. Quickly describe what that problem is. Talk about the study that we did to try to identify, first identify, well, first be able to better understand what the problem was and then understand the solutions to address the problem. And then talk about next steps and a quick discussion about infiltration and inflow in Raritan Borough. So if you turn the page on my handout, on to page two, you'll see the top slide shows SRVSA's service area. The dashed line along the Raritan River shows you where SRVSA's interceptor is. And you can see Raritan, if you look very carefully, you can see Raritan Borough highlighted there. And you can see that Raritan discharges into SRVSA's interceptor up near the left side or the most upstream side of SRVSA's interceptor. Waste water flows from left to right on the page, basically. So from west to east. SRVSA's treatment plant is shown with a star. And the location of the overflow is shown where you see the red circle on that map. So what's the problem? During wet weather conditions, extreme wet weather conditions, very substantial storms, SRVSA's interceptor becomes surcharged. So all the runoff from all the member municipalities within SRVSA's system ends up in the, well, much of it ends up in the sanitary sewer system and overloads the interceptor. During those times, because Somerville is so low relative to the interceptor, it can't drive its wastewater in. You've got a lot of pressure in the interceptor. You can't get the water in. Now, there are other municipalities. Bridgewater is a great example. That's much higher relative to the interceptor. So even though they discharge at a very similar location in the interceptor, they're at a much higher elevation, so they can drive the water in. That's really the issue. So what we set out to do is, one, understand where the overflows were occurring in Somerville, and then how to resolve the problem and stop these overflows from occurring. If you turn the page to page three, you'll see at the top is a picture of a park in Somerville. That's raw sewage you see pummeled in that park. That park has been closed for several years now because of these overflows. And the good news is Somerville has sealed the manholes in that park, so those manholes are not overflowing anymore. But as they seal manholes, they started sealing manholes down near the Raritan River, and they went up to the park. They keep driving the overflow further upstream. They can't seal manholes any further upstream because they're going to end up with, if they did that, they would end up with the potential of having sewage overflowing in the basements. So they've sealed as far up as they can without risking the community. The bottom, you see a slide that shows an aerial photograph. Along the bottom, you see SRVSA's interceptor in yellow, the yellow dashed line. And then in blue is the portion of the Somerville line where we have this overflow problem. That's the connection between Somerville and the interceptor. And you see I highlighted it with a red circ, well, there are actually two red circles on here. The upper one, the one on the top of the slide, is where the present overflow location is. There's a railroad line that crosses Peter's Brook at that location. The overflow is basically going right into Peter's Brook when it occurs. You'll see a circle down at the bottom that says, "Proposed future overflow location, temporary overflow location." DEP asked us to, while we're working on a permanent solution, to force the overflow downstream directly to the Raritan River where there's more pollution rather than having an overflow in Somerville and Peter's Brook. So SRVSA is about to put in a temporary overflow location so that when an overflow occurs, it will more likely go in at that location than north.
What's the location of that?
Right at the Raritan River.
Where? Somerville, right?
Just downstream of Peter's Brook.
So it'll be in Somerville?
It will actually be in Bridgewater.
See, that's a recommendation by DEP to dump into the?
It's more than a recommendation. It was required. Okay. I'm not going to go into a lot of details on the sampling program that you see on the top of page four. We had a very extensive sampling program, both in terms of flow metering, to understand what flow we had where in the system under various conditions. We had a water quality sampling program. We needed to understand what the impact of this overflow was on stream water quality. We also had to understand what the quality of the overflow itself was because we knew one of the alternatives might be to treat that overflow. So we had to know what we were going to have to treat if we were going to study that. So we looked at both flow conditions and water quality conditions.
You talked about treating. Now, is the water being treated currently at the Peter's Brook overflow?
No.
And it's not overflowing?
Yeah, it's overflowing at that level.
So all sewage is going directly into the Raritan River?
Yeah.
No, but Peter's Brook.
Well, but they want it to go to the river. There's no water flow.
Just that besides, this is only in rare occasions?
Yes, yes. When this is occurring, we're talking about more than two inches of rain has likely occurred. Stream flows are extremely high.
Talk of brown water running in the river, right?
Yeah.
Talk of brown water in the Raritan River?
Yes. You can't, I wasn't going to go into it, but I will say that from the sampling that we did, you can see the signature of the overflow in Peter's Brook. You can measure higher bacteria levels in Peter's Brook as a result of the overflow. When you get to the Raritan, you can't tell the difference between upstream and downstream. There's a bacteria upstream. There's bacteria downstream, but they're not statistically different. So what did we find with the sampling program? What we found is, first, we wanted to understand how often this has happened. And it happened four times in the year, roughly, the year that we were sampling. That happened to be, we had a lot of large storms that year. So from our perspective, it was good that we had four overflow events and that we could study. Obviously, it's not good that we had four overflow events. While we were studying it, it was nice to be able to see what was going on. What we found is that overflows are occurring both with and without flooding. We didn't know if we needed stream flooding before the overflow would actually occur. We thought that stream flooding might be causing conditions that were ending up with the overflow. That's not the case. We saw overflow with flooding. We saw overflow without. But the stream flooding impacts the location of the overflow. There are times where the stream at that overflow location that was circled in red on that map, the elevation of the stream was higher than that manhole. So the water didn't come out there. It came out further upstream. So depending on whether you have flooding or not, it depends on the effect of where the overflow occurred. As I mentioned before, Peter's Brook water quality was impacted by the overflow. But we couldn't see that signature in the Raritan River. The other thing is we studied the interceptor itself, SRVSA's interceptor itself. And that was found to be very tight. There's one leak that they're working on right now, but minor relative to the kind of flows that we're talking about here. So we know these big increases in flows into the interceptor are coming from the missile system, not the interceptor line itself.
We repaired that leak that we developed.
Okay. We also developed a hydraulic model of the sewer system that was used as a tool to help us evaluate different alternatives. And then the alternatives that we looked at, there were five of them. No action. Didn't take long to study that. You can't allow raw sewers to continue to be discharged to the environment. What we called our pump-and-treat option. What it basically meant was, install a pump station near the location of the overflow so that you could pump that wastewater directly to SRVSA's existing wastewater treatment plant. We looked at INI reduction, finding a way to reduce inflow and infiltration in all the municipal systems such that these overflows wouldn't occur. We looked at storage, building a large storage tank or multiple storage tanks such that when you got these peak flows and wastewater from Somerville couldn't get into the system, we'd fill up the tank during those times and then delete it out slowly. Seems like a great idea until you see the size of the tank. It's just an absolute disaster. So that would work too well. And then finally, building an auxiliary treatment facility. This turned out to be our recommended alternative and one which DEP has agreed with very recently, which is build an auxiliary treatment plant near the overflow. And during conditions when the overflow would occur, we would be able to turn on that treatment plant, treat the wastewater coming from Somerville, and then discharge it directly to the Raritan River. That turned out to be the least expensive alternative and also the one that I thought was best because it comes as close to guaranteeing no overflow as you can get compared to the other alternatives. Not often you have a selected alternative or a preferred alternative that happens to be the most economical. I don't remember that ever happening. So it was an easy alternative to recommend. You'll see on the next page, the top of page six, the different costs that we estimated for the different alternatives. And you'll see the storm control treatment facility, that auxiliary treatment facility, is by far the least costly alternative and the one that maximizes our chance of stopping the overflow and stopping it quickly.
And those, that system helping put in those two locations or one of the two locations?
Actually, it would be put just downstream of the park. So downstream of where the overflows are occurring. So what we will be able to do with this alternative, actually, if you flip to the top of page seven. If you look on the little schematic there, you'll see the line, you remember that blue pipe coming down from north to south on that aerial photo I showed you? That's that line you see on the left side of the schematic. You'll actually have a valve in that line, and you'll be able to shut the valve and isolate Somerville's system from the interceptor. So all that pressure that's now holding the flow back, you will isolate, and then it'll divert over to this treatment plant, which is a physical process. We couldn't rely on a biological process for this plant because it has to be something to deliberately flip the switch and turn on. So what we're relying on here is screening, settling, and filtering. All physical processes. So you could literally turn a switch. Water will flow there. It'll start operating immediately. And then after it's treated, discharge it to the Raritan River. Looks like you have a question.
I have like five. Well, just to start. So I'm back on page three. I'm slow. So basically, you're saying this treatment plant will be east of Southside Park, I guess, or near there?
It would be, you see Southside Avenue?
Yes.
It would be just to the south of Southside Avenue and east of where that blue line comes down.
So it would almost be over here where that, over here, right?
Yeah, it would be just north of where that box is.
Whatever, okay. And then what are you going to do with that stuff?
Treat it.
And then where does it go?
Raritan River after it's treated.
Then you're going to put a pipe and just shoot it into the river?
Yes. And it's out of a floodplain or a flood zone? The treatment plant would be out of the floodplain. In fact, we specifically located it so that it is outside of the park. Like, this is a lot of flood.
I'm sure, I knew you guys had thought that.
No, because that all floods back. I know that. Because even on 206, it floods. I mean, that's sanitary floods.
The area, both east and west of that blue line is in the floodplain. But as you go to the east, there's a plot of land that happens to be high and dry.
Okay.
About 10 feet, maybe.
No, not in the park, okay. And then my other question is, is on the, you had some water flows you showed on the four storms. And again, I'm just asking because I don't understand it. Like, one says, like, you know, page four, it says November 26, 27, 3.3 inches of rain. There was 10,000 gallons. And then on other, it doesn't seem mathematically equivalent to other, you know what I'm saying? So if I got 6.6, then I would think there'd be 20,000 gallons.
The great question. The antecedent conditions are key. So for example, if we got a two-inch storm today after it's been dried for so long,
It's not going to affect it.
It's not going to affect it the same as a two-inch storm in March after it's been wet.
And wet, whatever it's.
So we had a, for instance, that November 2013, I don't know if glasses are on. November was, oh, it was 13.
13.
13. November 2013, there was 3.3 inches of rain. That just barely caused an overflow.
Okay.
Only 10,000 gallons.
It hadn't rained for about four months.
But then look at March of 2014. A similar amount of rain.
Right.
We got a lot more overflow. Now, in addition, that storm, SRVSA was having some issues at their treatment plant, so they couldn't take in as much of this most stormwater.
Yeah, that was my question because it was number, I saw the asterisk, so it was like that.
How far down is it downstream from us? Because I know the river moves pretty fast from down. How far down is Peter's Brook from us?
Not far.
Well, it depends on how you look there. It's past Southbridge Street. Maybe I go Southbridge and turn onto Southside Avenue and just keep going straight down.
Yeah, as along the river, about a mile. Thinking about our interceptor. About a mile downstream.
Yeah, because I think Somerville Municipal Building's back there, right?
It's west of this location, about 1,000 feet.
I used to be. Yeah, in the cemetery.
So even though it's a mile downstream, if the sewage isn't properly treated, it could still affect us up here?
No. It would not.
There's so much flow coming. It should be, as I was going to say, it's a mile down.
Right.
And we could flow up here.
No, no, no. It would not affect you from a lot of distance.
Because it would have to be going against the curve.
Yeah, it's going away from you.
And you would, in this situation, you'd have a flood. You'd have so many millions of gallons going down the Raritan River in a cycle.
The issue, I mean, the reason, just to link this back, the reason we're here is because each of the municipalities within the service area are contributing to this interceptor becoming surcharged during wet weather conditions. So what we're hoping to understand is what work Raritan is doing on inflow and infiltration repairs and what you're proposing to do in the future because it's a condition of the work that we're doing. DEP is requiring us to work towards reducing INI.
Actually, we've had quite a few discussions recently with the STAND's guidance on INI and measuring it. We're trying to get a mapping of INI and trying to put together who's STAND's recommendation, a plan on it because it is an issue.
That's great because I don't think, well, I know that DEP doesn't recognize how much work the municipalities are individually doing. And it's important for us to be able to share that information with them because I think in their mind, everyone's just sitting around doing nothing. And that's not. We've been to many municipalities already within the service area. It's very clear to me, people are doing a lot of work in this area. DEP just doesn't recognize it. It's very important to us to be able to take this, your efforts and the efforts of others in the service area and let DEP know what's going on.
So we could probably work something out with STAND on what we're doing and what our plans are.
Right.
Yeah, we want to be in ongoing dialogue. So, you know, the way Jim laid out with our proposed solution and we're going to move ahead with that construction. And we'll be giving you updates and we'll be in touch with both Dan and Stan. But, you know, we'd like to maintain the dialogue with all the municipalities and from time to time, let DEP know what's going on in the service area. But bottom line is, if all of us let the systems just go, then the authorities just got to keep building more and more. And, you know, you guys own the authority, the Raritan Borough and the other six municipalities.
And we pay for the INI.
Yeah.
So that's why we're looking to reduce some of the INI.
How much is this going to cost us?
Seventeen?
No, 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 no. I know it says 18 million, but there's three municipalities that are affected. So that's why I asked that. Six million dollar question.
It's more than three. So there's seven municipalities that are members of the authority. Yeah. So the authority is looking to finance this and the impact at a rate we're not certain at this point. There's some debt that we're retiring from an upgraded plant 18 years ago. The timing may work where, as that debt is retiring, we can bring on this new debt, maybe a year premature where we have both debt services. But we haven't laid that out yet because so much of the timing of this is critical and dependent upon DEP's approval. And we're working on getting all that lined up. Our next step is to get our permission to allow the discharge to the river. And it all takes time. So until we know those schedules, we won't go for the financing. But we're looking to finance this through the New Jersey Infrastructure Trust. But we'll keep you updated and of course, our board members are updated monthly and it's in our daily dialogue. But certainly, we welcome any questions and we'd be happy to come back and give you updates from time to time.
Mayor, do you have any questions?
I don't. I'm fine. We've had discussions a lot also. But the council is very aware that every cubic foot of INI is a key component here. So we know some hard facts now. They appropriate money, spend the funds. For this winter, we're going to continue mapping some study and we're going to put together our own lock to the main of the INI. On short term, we just signed a grant with the development for some of the areas that we know we're having some problems. We've been moving, we have been doing projects a little bit since some reductions. But when you look at the numbers, it demonstrates how much is actually going down. Train, we're paying for it. So it's almost fair.
If you could somehow share a summary of the work that we've done and what we're going to do.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right, moving on. Do you have anything to say, Mayor? Moving on to the engineer's report.
All right, thanks. I don't have a written report. This is on vacation today. So I'll summarize what I'm saying today. First, I am on the agenda, on my agenda, actually, because Ron is here. If we recall the last meeting of the mayor throughout the past year, the problems of the library. I brought in a consultant from my firm a month ago last year and worked with Ron to work with. We went and looked at it. It was probably the next step.
Ready.
And the system, the electrical system is extremely old. It's been built, as you know, it's been built upon. There's many, many issues with it. Our recommendation is to replace the panels that are there now. Relocate them away from the water like they're in here. And redesign the system. There's plus involved at the time. There's going to be a discussion between who's responsible for that. The library of boroughs. The boroughs holding the library is using it. That's your concern on mine. But the fee we propose for the redesign of the system is $5,000.
How much?
$5,000. They have included my work and I'm working with seven consultants. And the rebate that money's not available now. It has to be approved somehow. It's a special payment. We investigate the solution just in time. And I would recommend that we will pay the sub panel there also for the issue.
Is that $5,000 for the sub panel?
But right now, it has to, we have to do the design investigation, we have to incorporate the force, I don't have a full cost count of the sub panel.
Five thousand needs to be done right now. Dan, we don't have anything in the bill just yet?
No, I was thinking about maybe capital improvement fund. I'll explore that with Karen.
Are you going to have a discussion about whether it's us that are going to pay for that, or the library's going to pay for that? They have capital funds.
Excuse me, need your contract that you made me sign. You paid for it. It's capital. Here's, I got to interrupt one thing though. We've replaced two burned wires, and we should have just told about it. In the last month, we've replaced two burned wires. For some reason, the ground system, we're getting twelve volts through it, and refusing wires together. We have an unhealthy situation there. And it's something that I don't think should be delayed in next year's budget. Where there's items there that are not even up to code. Stan saw that too, with his engineer. But the situation is, it appears to be, since we're having these ground problems in the main breaker panel, we're getting all this voltage back. We take the cover off spark supply. Like I said, the last six weeks, we replaced two wires. I mean, they got hot enough that you can't put your hand around them. To me, this is unsafe situation.
Well, I think you've had a lot of work, electrical work on that, and nobody noticed that there were inadequate boxes and wiring and all this stuff?
Nobody noticed?
They did some work and all kinds of stuff. No one noticed all of these huge problems?
Who did the electrical work?
Did you put in air conditioners and stuff? Don't they run on electricity?
The wires are already there. You throw a breaker, the wire's already there. That guy's in a breaker box, you said. No, it ain't even with the panel, it ain't even with the main panel. They've got to disconnect that right at the, right at the, you have one in your house too, right outside. You have to have one, it's the law. The thing about it is, you have an unsafe situation, and his engineer agreed with that. It's not safe, correct? I'm not saying a dire emergency, but it's not safe the way it is.
Why agree? I think it does need to be addressed.
Well, it's, is it safe or unsafe?
I'm not going to say that. It's an old system and needs improvement. It's been built upon, I know it was permitted when it was done, but it's in an area where it should be located.
Another issue that arisen is the northeast, northwest corner that's in, there's water coming in the window there. And that's right above all the panels. There's three phases coming in there. You're talking waters, this big coming into there. It's also located next to the fire alarm system, the fire sprinkler system, which is apparently not.
Supposed to be thirty inches away, it's six inches away.
So I mean, there's issues that need to be.
That's code. And it's got an approval sticker on it, from seventy whatever.
About the first, we can do budget transfers, but I'll explore with Karen, I have mentioned it too, because Ron has spoken to me, I mentioned it to Karen, you know, with so many things going on Labor Day, but whether or not, you know, we're talking about five thousand dollars. If, you know, and I don't, it's independent question of who wants to pay for it, but I think we can, I think we could have money in capital improvement fund to appropriate as a preliminary expense for the design. I'll investigate that tomorrow.
But I don't think we can wait on the design portion of this till November.
I don't either. We need to get ahead. I throw that out, because I know your question was asked of whether we have the public buildings account. I think, coincidentally, I've spoken to you, Greg, about how much we've spent on that. That's why I would prefer to do this as a preliminary capital expense.
How much have we spent on that? You talked to Greg about it.
You talk about, you're talking about, you know, you're getting too close to sixty over sixty percent of the budget easily, seventy percent of the total now. We've had some larger expenses. So, yes, I could take it out of that, but I would prefer to take it out as a preliminary capital expense, and if the councils agree.
I think, can we agree that we need to get the design phase started on this?
I agree, I agree, yeah. I think we need to.
Can we give Dan Cleef permission to start that?
I can proceed with the work anticipating that funds will eventually be in place.
I'm concerned with wires arcing like that. I mean, I don't want to see something happen over there. I mean, I would like to authorize the five thousand. I don't want to see anything happen over there.
That's not going to take care of any sparking.
Nope.
But it's getting ahead of the game.
It's paperwork.
We're behind the game.
We're behind it right now, we got to start catching up to it. And I think giving Stan permission, let's do that. All right, good?
Do we need to make a motion on that, Rich?
No, he has consensus from the council. Stan's proceed.
Okay.
Anything else on that, Stan?
No, that's, let me continue. The good news, I think you know, is that Johnson Drive's completed.
Very good job.
Service is beautiful.
I like to give credit where it's due, though, and that's to Rich and his firm. The settlement on this case is, it worked out very well for the borough. The simple solution for the bonding company was just to pay as what was available in the bond that the bond was for. Rich and his firm negotiated a completion of the project, which is totally different. There's a lot more dollars involved from the bonding company to complete that work. It took a bit of time, but it all worked out well. Secondly, or thirdly, rather, Victoria Street in Southwick is completed. We're in receipt now of the maintenance bond, so we're going to do one payment on that to the contractor at the next council meeting. And Maggie helped us get minutes for the scoping hearing very quickly that was sent down to the teenagers, and we're working the teenagers now to resolve any issues. That's my report, I'll put it in later.
All right, Dan, quarterly Borough Electronics Recycling?
Yes, Mayor, I just, I sent this to the council, but just make you aware of the fact that Somerset County is changing electronic waste recycling to either Hillsborough on Saturday drop-offs or weekdays to Bridgewater and Hillsborough, used to be New Tech. And Franklin, that's the company we use for our quarterly in-town recycling. So, New Tech has informed us, they will not change anything and allow it to go through with our October recycling, but then they don't know about next year. So there's going to be a question, and Rich, we never got to talk about this late last week, as to whether or not this would be a concession issue, or whether we could just piggyback on the new recycling firm that the county unexpectedly is using. I want the council to be aware of it, there's nothing for you to decide, but there's going to be some issues worked out for next year's quarterly recycling, which, you know.
Well, we did, we brought the electronic recycling into town because it was far away, and we were trying to make it convenient for our residents. The borough was also, we received money back because of the tonnage. So we were trying to make it convenient, we allowed anybody from out of town, businesses to bring it in. So it was a benefit, it was a win-win for our residents all the way around. So any company that we are even remotely looking at, it would have to be a win-win for our community.
I hear you. My concern is this has to be a concession situation where the person who is, it was easy when.
They didn't charge us to commit that, so we.
I know that, but again, there's always the question, and I think it's been brought up before, about the concession idea. Just because you say we're not going to charge you anything, doesn't mean that you don't have to go through some type of bidding, because somebody could say, we will pay you in order to have the right to put in a pay-in and get recycling because we can make money off of it. I think these questions will be resolved. The one option, and I'm not trying to be confrontational at all when I say this, one is to say, now that people can bring their electronic recycling, and you brought up a good point about the fact that we get credit, but now that people can bring it to Hillsborough and Bridgewater, even weekdays, that you can always consider not having a quarterly.
But at the same time, that Hillsborough, and with all due respect, that Hillsborough and Bridgewater are getting those credits, and Raritan is missing out on those credits.
Well, I don't know about how that works with the county.
Then the county's getting those credits?
The county, I would say, might get the credit because it's on.
It's something that I think the county, let's see what these concessions are going to, let's see what these other companies are going to do, because why would Raritan want to lose out on the credits? It's not costing us anything, it's a convenience to our community, and we are receiving credits. We're getting money back for this.
One thing I could push is for the new recycling company to provide what New Tech has, and then say essentially, we're an extension of the county, but I just want to make sure this is legal.
We want to make sure that it continues to be a win-win for us, period. That's how, I mean, right now, this is a perfect situation for our town, our seniors, it's convenient for them, nobody has to leave the town. I mean, this is a very good situation for Raritan right now. If we can maintain this situation, there's no need to change it. This is working, businesses are utilizing it.
I understand, I'm merely saying that it's changed because the company that we're providing is no longer, is, and then no longer the county being recycled, and that's what we have to work out. And I understand exactly.
Well, I don't want to lose it, because I, residents I've talked to.
They love it, absolutely.
They want it convenient.
And it's pretty much, it's a convenience right through the town.
Correct.
Well, if worse comes to worse, I mean, if worse comes to worse and you can't find somebody, we could, we just have the town guys take that voice over.
But then we lose.
To Hillsborough. No, listen, I get that, I'm saying, if you can't get one, I'm not disagreeing with anyone.
You add that up, I mean, you have a number of parks.
Oh, yeah.
But you know, but then, but then the bottom line too, is that it's costing us, then it becomes an expense on us, because then we have to pay our guys.
I'm not, I'm saying if we can't find somebody.
Yeah, we're trying to make.
I mean, there's also the option of having a new company sort of replicate what New Tech.
I get it.
And that is another possibility.
No, I get it, you might not be able to find somebody that's still in New Tech, that's what I'm saying.
I'm sure there's company, there's going to be a company that will maintain what we are currently getting.
Anything else on that topic? Okay, this is Ron, Pod Storage, this is Mayor Wintax. Hi, Dan, do you have anything on it that we should discuss, or should we go on to the next?
I can help on that. You know, we were reconstructing, doing work on the Southwick side, well, there was one of those pots, some of the driveway, this place actually didn't disappear, they had to move, so we continue our work, very difficult time having a concession group, yes, and maybe once required that there's something accessible.
Is it really that big of an issue?
It was getting moved, yes, basically, it was.
There was one in.
At the point where we told the pod company it's going to be towed, and the pod company said we were responsible for it, it was decided, eventually got worked out, but it was too late on.
See, I think the issue's still going to happen if we have an ordinance or not.
Well, if the ordinance is there, it might affect us.
Dan, didn't we have this discussion before about timing of it? I remember way back, we talked about.
We did, I think it hasn't, very often, these things come in a day or two.
I know, it was a fire in that house.
Yeah, it was a fire in the hall.
But it's been there a long time.
Well, we called, we called the pod company to have, they're not responsible for us, this official, but we still aren't responsible, although she really said we want to correct all of it, but they, the pod company made that we're responsible for it, that's damage to it, because their pod is on our road, so we had issues, there's awards, that's like the thing.
Are there other towns that have?
Right, I think the council president's point, you got to talk to Frank and find out whether this is really a systemic kind of issue, or it's an isolated event, where you go.
Do you know of other towns that have that?
I don't, I'm sure some have other deal with that.
I'm afraid they'll make something like this.
Come up as a warning.
Yeah, right, but that's the reason it was on the agenda, the mayor was aware.
I went to a conference with Frank, we discussed it, see how many pods are in.
Lou was pretty familiar with the issue. And he said, he said that they're usually not long and they're controlled.
I say we need a lot of frauds. I think we just leave the issue alone.
I haven't seen too many of them.
Personally. And Frank could say what they said.
We'll find out what they have to say, we'll back to it, we need to. Recycling project, inspired dog and cat tags.
Yes, yeah, so next, only senior packet, and I'm waiting that student to come into the borough after we place a one-on-one encounter, where it's fire-walled and cat tags, when the rest of the program is new. It would be a small job, he's going to come pick up his tags, take them to the recycling center, get a small collection, show them the tags, and then he's going to turn it over to the Somerset Animal Shelter. Council's agreeable to that, if you all agree, I want you to know that Raritan does not belong to the Somerset Animal Shelter.
None better.
That's an issue.
I know, I want to raise.
Is he right next to him?
Rich, thank you.
He is, he is.
They do it all in town.
He's doing a set of towns, he got hated one.
I think Dan hasn't.
Yeah, my concern is going, and this has been brought up before, websites, with other activities, these situations, for example, of whether nonprofit groups should be in some way interacting with the governmental functions that we have. And if the Somerset Regional Animal Shelter was the county facility, or even a county endorsed facility, to me, I would have something to do with it. There are towns that participate voluntarily, it's not the county animal shelter at all. And I just, I think you could be opening up a door, saying that nonprofits, that people, the borough is integrated, but a lot of times, we have a county, we might have abused women or something like that, and the county is involved, so the borough gets involved.
I thought.
That the hospital might have a blood drive. Well, okay, a blood drive, there's nothing wrong with the borough saying, hey, but there's a blood drive, we'll let people load it.
Why don't we find out why he's doing this? I think it has to do with maybe an Eagle Scout project or something like that.
I can ask him that, I don't believe he's an Eagle Scout, no. The reason he's doing it is he volunteers at this animal shelter, and he just thought of this idea to try to raise money, and instead of throwing those aluminum tags in the trash, it's like a recycling thing.
It's a good idea.
But there's so many nonprofits, you're just opening the door to people who want to, who want to have an activity to raise money for their worthy and good nonprofit.
But we do bring one, well, it's a county business. I want to point out, the only difference in this situation is you're not soliciting money, you're not, the people are coming in and they're exchanging the dog tag license or the cat license, it's there, they have it in hand, and if they want to put it in the donation bin, they can do that. You're not actively soliciting money for the charity, you're not allowing the charity to.
But he is making money, and he is raising it for that, and so that meant people are fundraising, who are nonprofit, who are not directly related with our government. And I just think it's, I think it should be avoided as best as possible. It's not a perfect, it can't be perfectly delineated.
It's a good idea.
I don't have a problem with it. I don't really technically think he's fundraising, I think he's trying to recycle his hat.
Yeah, I'm really good.
We are, we are.
I appreciate, I get what you're saying, I do.
It's a good idea.
He's doing the right thing.
Yeah, we're doing it environmentally, so that's how we're going.
He's doing the right thing.
You're killing this thing.
We're going green, Dan.
The guy's trying to do something decent.
He's doing the right thing.
I don't know who breaks their tags back there. That's going to be.
That's a position.
When we advertise, he asks that somehow I let the residents know. So when we advertise on the website that a dog license, a cat license, or do, I would put a little blurb at the bottom saying, if you would like to bring your tag in to be recycled, we will collect it in the borough. That's it.
Good job.
It's a one-age tag, yeah.
I think he might have more luck by having a donation bucket than the money he's going to get for recycling.
Change how probably.
He's trying to do something.
That's great, good job.
Okay, six, Lonnie, first group, pause, have we discussed, Dan, we need to discuss that again? Special end permit, next Raritan pub.
Yeah, I had a conversation with the people down there, and they would like on the day the Basilone Parade, they want to do it properly and get a permit, not just do it. They want to sell some food out in front of their place contiguous with the front of their building, doesn't interfere with foot traffic. They have a new place, they're trying to establish a business, it's good business relations. They're going to do all the cooking inside, no alcohol outside, they're just basically going to have some hamburgers and stuff, so they start building up their business a little bit. I thought it's a great idea, and maybe some of the other places ought to do it, you know, a little something extra for the parade, but they would like a 24-hour permit for the Basilone Parade to serve food.
I have no problem with that.
I think it's a good idea.
How do we get a permit?
Do they need a permit? Because they have a permit. They have a food establishment permit.
So they don't need anything in writing?
So it would be really an extension of their current food establishment permit.
So who's going to do that?
All council has to do is basically make an motion to agree that they have this one-day permit, since they already have a food handlers license, they don't need anything else from the county. As long as they keep it contiguous to their building, okay?
It's contiguous, and it's not in a footpath.
But it's council's decision to allow it outside of the street.
Right.
Motion came approved next.
Well, it's not the street, but it's contiguous to their building, it's not interfering with the traffic.
It has to be.
Yeah, it will be, it will be, at the end of the ramp, on that side.
Councilman Carr.
One second.
Councilwoman Karen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garrett.
Yes.
Councilwoman Geraldo.
Yes.
Mayor Lobell.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sobilli.
Yes.
All right, ordinance, second reading, this is going to be canceled until the 13th of October.
Yes.
So we need a motion?
So we need a motion, can we label this?
This is the freshest mess. Why are we table?
Remember to discuss it.
Why you leave a table?
I thought, this is like ridiculous, he's on the table, it just has to be on the agenda every, that's fine.
Paul's made some good comments on the ordinance, if anybody else would like to put some stuff together, that then we can then have the conversation. But I have not talked to the people that I want to.
Yes.
So we need a motion?
So we need a motion, then, this is a motion to table this.
This is the freshest mess of November. Why are we table?
Remember to discuss it.
Why do you leave it tabled?
Yeah, I thought, this is like ridiculous, leaving it on the table. It does have to be on the, on the agenda, I mean, that's fine.
Paul's made some good comments on the ordinance. If anybody else would like to put some stuff together, that, then we can then have the conversation. But I have not talked to, to people that I want to.
And unfortunately, you're tableing it. I think I can stay on the table. No action, stay on the table.
So you leave it on the table until you're ready to act on it?
Councilor, I stand.
Whatever you all do.
No problem.
I'm in favor of this. I'm in favor of this.
You're in favor of it?
Yes, I am.
I am too, with my face.
I'm on limitations as well.
But we're not discussing it.
I'm on limitations too.
Well, I guess that maybe we need to put together, we're discussing it, but, uh, put together a committee or something to go over what is on in the current ordinance, because-
I don't, Greg, we don't need a committee. We already have the ordinance. You know, you and I just discussed it. We know what businesses are affected. We just need to have a conversation about it.
I don't like it. It's not complicated.
The only reason we tabled it in the first place was because Greg had objections and he wasn't here.
Did everyone, were you on vacation? Did everyone would be with the chief of police when I had the chief of police together?
No, I read the letter. Some of it doesn't make any sense. Now, quite honestly, you know, he's talking about business, but he's looking at it from a law enforcement perspective. We're looking at it from a business perspective. There's two, two views.
Yes, there are.
And I think, I agree with some of it in there, some of it I don't. We need to have an open discussion, which we were waiting for Greg to come back, because Greg was vehemently against it.
I would, I would-
And he came back, and it's still sitting tabled. I mean, it's, it's been a long time.
Can I, can I ask then, can, I, I would respectfully ask then that it is tabled till the next council meeting, the end of September?
Well, I'm not gonna be here for that meeting.
Because I will not be here for the October thirteenth meeting.
Whatever you all work out. I thought we were gonna discuss it tonight.
Can we discuss it tonight, then? Can we discuss it tonight?
Yeah, I don't know. Come on, man.
Well, Greg, Greg wants to talk to some business people.
I wanna talk to you.
I understand the rationale for that.
Maybe the two businesses and give them an opportunity to come in here and voice their opinions on it.
I mean, it does affect them.
And I, and I respect that.
So, maybe we'll just have to push it back until everybody's here.
But I think, well, I don't think it should just be from those two businesses.
I don't either.
Well, it, it should only, it's only gonna affect the people it affects, and there's only a couple of businesses in town that it will. The rest of it really doesn't, doesn't play into it. I mean, there's nobody, you know, taking in used typewriters and they're all that.
Well, there are, there are people taking in used phones.
And iPads, iPads, computers, yes.
Yes, there are.
Without a doubt.
Who?
Are you kidding me?
They're taking in used phones right after this.
iPhone, you turn in an iPhone, a used iPhone, you get four hundred dollars.
Absolutely.
Where?
The circle.
You go online. You go anywhere.
Online, so we're gonna, we're gonna-
You get, you get, you get to know the victim.
We're gonna monitor online?
No, you're not gonna monitor online. I'm just telling you right now. You could say, you, you got an iPhone. I can sell it right now.
With, to who?
I can sell to anybody.
No, but that would just sound like an issue now.
That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a-
I could sell to AT&amp;T, buy a cell's refurbished phone.
We're talking about a business.
You have a Horizon coming on, on, uh, on the street.
Andy, Andy, come back. We're talking about business. If I sell her my iPhone, that's not part of this.
No, I'm not disagreeing, but you sell your phone back to AT&amp;T.
You can't sell your phone back. They give you a credit. You have to get a new phone.
No, you get a refurbish. What, that, that is, that doesn't-
You can take it to the AT&amp;T store. They don't give you a twenty-dollar bill for your phone.
You're getting payment towards your new phone.
Andy, Andy, we, I just went to Horizon to turn a phone in. You get a credit on the new one. They don't hand you a twenty-dollar bill. They're not getting any money. It's not a pawn shop.
They hand you prepaid, prepaid credit cards.
Oh, stop it. That, that's not what we're talking about. We're gonna, we're gonna go after AT&amp;T and Verizon.
AT&amp;T's a hundred eighty billion dollar company.
Oh, yeah, let's, let's bring their business to the table.
I even think we tabled this.
Wait a minute, you have a chance to talk about it.
Do you wanna discuss this and untable it, or do we want it?
Real quick, real quick point. This law was designed, and I know I talked to people down there, for jewelry stores, because they take in gold, silver, jewelry. And they're basically uncontrolled, and they're not pawn shops. So they don't fall under the pawn shop regulations. I know, I regulate them in the state. The truth is, that's what it was designed for. Somebody decided to throw everything but the kitchen sink in here, which I think is Greg's problem and my problem. So, the, the jewelry shops in the gold and silver makes a lot of sense. Typewriters and tubas and used clothing really don't make a lot of sense. That's what we were gonna discuss. But it does have a place, but I don't think, it's too far ranging, is my problem.
But I still think you should put electronics in there. I do too. Electronics.
Oh, there's everything here. There's, there's, there's hardware equipment. There's fishing poles. There's typewriters, tubas, slow vehicles. There's everything, which doesn't affect most of our businesses anyway. So, but if you want to push it back so we have a discussion with the business people, with the fact, that makes sense. Greg?
All right, this is, shoot for the thirteenth. We know we're, she asks pretty firm.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So let's have a conversation on the thirteenth, and, uh, we'll go from there.
Yeah, perhaps, um, Mr. Wenda will do, um, what we did last night, and I can contribute, um, via the phone.
All right, where were we?
We don't need to answer.
All right, uh, authorize, you, Resolution Number twenty fifteen dash oh nine dash one oh five, authorizing twenty fifteen community development grant agreement for sanitary sewer rehabilitation on Old York Road, Orlando Drive and Canal Street.
Make that motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Karen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fooey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gara?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gerold?
Yes.
Mayor LaBelle?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sibylle?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number twenty fifteen dash oh nine dash one oh six, renewal of twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen liquor license, sixty-five Assante LLC, Royal Order of Raritan Moose, Lodge Number nineteen sixty-five.
Make that motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Karen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fooey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gara?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gerold?
Yes.
Mayor LaBelle?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sibylle?
Yes.
Do we, uh, approve the purchase order all in one, if I read it all in one part? Well, you're all firing apart.
We could do it in top.
You can, you know, the council, the, the council at times has wanted to do things collectively, then they go back. If you do it collectively, you can, if, if, if a council person wants to do something singular, singularly, they can pull it. But if you feel comfortable, I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
Thinking of something we've just lost on that, so I'll just read them all.
You know, and the council chan, has changed its lineal, but it, that's, that's part of, I think you just can't.
Maybe that all the purchase orders are for the fire department or the law as well. Okay, so, um, we'd like to get approval on purchase of, where, the fire department for purchase of software, FH web hosting, firehouse software in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Purchase order number two, fire department firefighter equipment, New Jersey Fire Equipment Company in the amount of two thousand three hundred and one dollars and eighty-two cents. Fire department firefighter equipment, Centennial Fire and Safety Incorporated in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. And lastly, firefighting equipment, emergency equipment sales in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty and five cents.
I'll make that motion. Second.
So the patient funds are fast for all of them. Councilwoman Karen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fooey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gara? Councilman Gerold?
Can I throw something in quick? Can, can we have the representative of the fire department come next meeting and talk about fire truck that we're supposed to buy? All right, yes, I vote yes.
All right, I'm sorry, I'll make the call.
No, what's going on?
Aye.
Uh, Councilwoman Mayor LaBelle?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Sibylle?
Yes.
My understanding is that fire chief is meeting, uh, having a meeting tonight to review specs, state contact specs on it.
And they come to next meeting and explain all of it. What's going on?
Hold on.
All right, if they sit, if they sit down.
Any correspondence?
I have one thing I'd like to say. I would like to thank, uh, Dan and his staff, uh, for that double A-plus credit rating. That's what, that's what our, our town gets, which is, uh, beneficial to everyone in the town by more credit, lower rates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Very good job. Yeah, and almost everyone, man, everybody. Have a good job. Thank you.
Good to see you, Reverend. All right, any public comments? See, no one? Need a motion for adjournment?
I don't have a public comment.
Yeah, just one thing. I don't have an engineer's report the next meeting, but I would like to discuss the P O T grant for next year. They are moving on full right, and they can, for, uh, so.
Put that on the agenda.
Adjourned?
Second. Councilwoman Karen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fooey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gara?
Yes.
Councilman Gerold?
Yes.
Mayor LaBelle?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sibylle?
Yes.